So, check, check, one, two. You got it in the key pro? Okay.
All right. Hey, everyone. My name's Adam Malatry. I'm the Student Government Association President. I'm also a member on the Campus Carry Task Force with Christopher Lee, SGA Vice President, and Jim Dale, Graduate Student Council Representative. Thank you all for showing up. We really do value your inputs, especially considering there's a lot of debate with All right, okay, cool. We're gonna have a 15-minute presentation given by Eric Fritsch. He's the head of the Department of Criminal Justice. I think that his presentation will be able to answer a lot of your questions, so we ask that you hold them till the very end. All right, so, thank you. I'm gonna hand it off to Eric now.
Thank you, Adam. Is the mic all working and operational? Everything's good? Okay. Well, first, thank you for attending. I just wanna introduce the members of the task force that are present first. Elizabeth With, who was trying to just run away, is right there. We have Ed Reynolds, Chief of Police. We have Mo McGinnis from the Dean of Students. We have Brad Scott from Risk Management. You already pointed to Christopher Lee from SGA. We have Adam from SGA, and we have Damian Torres from Multicultural Center, and we have James Dale from the Graduate Student Council, and then we have Zane Reeve from Union. That's all I know about Union. That's it. You just, that whole thing. All right. And then we have Margarita and Kelly from URCM. Anybody else? Okay. So, what we're gonna do today is this, is we need your input, because the President has appointed a 23-member task force. I'm chairing the committee. We have police, we have dean of students, we have SGA representatives, we have graduate student council representatives, we have housing representatives, we have the provost, so the chief academic officer for the university on the task force. We have a wide range of people, faculty, staff, students, employees, on the committee. But we need to have what I refer to as a consultative process to develop this policy. So, what we're going to talk about today is, I'm gonna give you kind of a 15-minute presentation on some information you need to know regarding the law, regarding concealed handgun licenses, et cetera, and then we're really gonna open it up for discussion. And we wanna hear from you about what you're looking for, what your concerns are, et cetera, what you're looking for in this policy, and we'll talk about the process in which we'll follow moving this policy through the process from the committee to the President to the Board of Regents. So that's what we're gonna do today. So, I'm gonna go through this so that I get all the information out, and then I'm just gonna open it up for discussion. And if you're wondering, maybe, well, I said something, why ain't anybody taking any notes? This is being recorded for forever. All right? It'll be posted on the website, but we're gonna go back. I don't wanna be sitting here trying to talk to you and write at the same time. So we'll go back through it, we'll take notes, and we'll provide all that information to the committee. So, here's an overview of what we're doing. So, I already introduced the task force members that are in attendance. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna do an overview of the Campus Carry law requirements. I wanna make sure everybody's clear on, this is what the law requires us to do, the Campus Carry law. We're gonna talk about concealed handgun license requirements, because that's what the law, that's who the law applies to, and so we'll make sure you're clear on what those requirements are, some data that we have on handgun license holders in the state of Texas, and then the estimated impact on UNT. And then, once we're done with that, we'll open it up for questions and answers. So, first, Campus Carry law requirements. Senate Bill 11 is what it's referred to, enacted into law in this past legislative session and signed by Governor Abbott. Basically, this isn't the first time that the legislature has explored this issue. It's come up in previous legislative sessions. It just so happens that this time it was passed and enacted by our legislature and signed into law by Governor Abbott. And basically, what it does is that third bullet point right there. It allows concealed handgun license holders, so what we would just refer to as CHL holders, for CHL holders to carry a concealed handgun on or about their person, that sounds like a legal term, right, 'cause it came from the law, on or about their person, while on campus, once the law becomes effective, which is August 1, 2016. So, we are in a position now of developing the policy that will go to the draft stage to the President, then to the Board of Regents, and we will be ready to roll once the law becomes effective in August 1, 2016. Campus Carry, as it says there, allows for the concealed carry, so the hidden carry of handguns. It does not allow for open carry, and we'll mention that again later, but open carry is basically in a holster, kinda like you see a police officer, and that is not allowed under this policy, and actually, it's going to be forbidden by law, even though open carry is going to be allowed in Texas. It's just not gonna be allowed on university campuses. And as it says there in bold, UNT is gonna abide by the requirements of the law. We've received some feedback from people in talking that, you know, we should fight this, you know, we don't need guns on campus, et cetera. The legislature's passed the law. We are going to have concealed handgun license holders on this campus, August 1, 2016, carrying weapons. As I've said, and it got quoted once, that ship has sailed. So what we're here to talk about is how we can craft the policy to meet the needs of our students, faculty, and staff. But we're not here to discuss, should we have Campus Carry or not, because we will have Campus Carry, we have to by law have Campus Carry. All right. So that's a repeat of what I've already said, but just some more requirements. Once the law is effective, CHL holders may carry a concealed handgun on or about their person, once the law becomes effective, while they are on campus. And here's kind of the, I think, the point that requires the most discussion today, at least in my opinion, is that we may, so we, UNT, may restrict certain areas from Campus Carry. And in order to do that, we must give effective notice to any portion of campus in which holders may not carry a concealed handgun. And I put such as collegiate sporting events. And I put that there, because right now, if you are a CHL holder, you can't carry at a collegiate sporting event. It's not allowed by law. So that's why I put it there, 'cause it's currently not allowed by law. In other words, it's not a decision the task force made. It's a decision the legislature made way back when, when it enacted the concealed carry in the state of Texas. But, and here's the thing, so, okay, it's awesome, we get to carve out what some people are referring to as gun-free zones, but we may not establish provisions that generally prohibit or have the effect of generally prohibit license holder from carrying concealed handguns on campus. Yeah, that's the legal terminology. That's from the law. But basically, what it says is this, we can't have those areas so broad that it nullifies the effect of the law. So we have to be very strategic in what we identify as gun-free zones, as they are being called. So, after consulting with students and then employees, so faculty and staff, the President is in the end responsible for this, and will establish rules regarding the carrying of concealed handguns on campus by license holders. And our job as a task force is to have him a draft policy by December 15. So that's what he's requested of us. And so, this is the first of seven town hall meetings that we're gonna have. We're gonna have two with students, two with faculty, two with staff, and then one at Discovery Park, so that College of Engineering, College of Information don't have to come over here to discuss this. Also, the law requires or allows universities to establish rules concerning the storage of handguns in campus housing. And we can talk about that later, if you have questions about that as well. We have the Dean of Students present with us. And again, effective date in bold, 'cause I don't want it to get lost in the discussion, but the effective date is August 1, 2016. So that's the date in which people with CHLs can carry on campus. That's just the effective notice, so that's what it's gonna look like. So if a building or a portion of a building is deemed to be the quote-unquote "gun-free zone," this is what it's going to look like. We have to give people effective notice by law that they cannot carry in that particular location. So, what happens is, we, December 15, hand over a draft policy to the President. The President then has an opportunity to review it, make any revisions, and then it will be submitted to the Board of Regents for modification and approval in February 2016. So that's the timeline we're working off of. So, February 2016, we will have our Campus Carry policy in place. That will give us plenty of time then, 'cause it starts August 1, give us six months then to work on implementing this policy on campus. We also have to publish and distribute it to students and employees, which we will do. We'll publish it on the website, which, of course, we will do. And we also, September 1, 2016, then every two years thereafter, we have to report to the legislature, basically, these are the restricted areas on our campus, and this is why. All right? So that's what that means at the very end. Just a couple more things about Campus Carry before we move on to CHL, but we cannot revoke the right of a CHL holder to carry on campus. That is the Texas Department of Public Safety's responsibility. So we, at UNT, do not have any authorization whatsoever to tell anyone that's a CHL holder that they cannot carry on campus, unless it's in one of those gun-free zones. If their license is gonna be revoked or suspended, that is a matter that is taken up with the Texas Department of Public Safety. All right? Second thing, once the law becomes effective, this is for concealed handgun license holders, so once the law becomes effective, if somebody puts their handgun in a visible location or in plain view, then that is against the law, and the UNT Police Department can take action against that person. In addition to that, it will clearly still be against the law for them to carry a concealed handgun in an area designated as one of those gun-free zones that we've given effective notice to the person that they can't carry. Open carry, I mentioned it before. Open carry takes effect January 1, 2016, and that's basically the exposure of the weapon, so in a holster like a police officer has. Open carry is going to be allowed in the state of Texas, beginning January 1, 2016, but it is not going to be allowed at UNT. Reason is, the law specifically excludes institutions of higher education from open carry. So, open carry's not the issue, Campus Carry is the issue that we're dealing with. And the other last thing that I think's important to understand is that we do not have the legal authority to require a CHL holder to self-identify. So some reporter, I've done a few interviews today, asked me, well, how many do you think you're going to have, or how are you gonna know? And the reality is, we won't know, because we're not allowed to basically ask, I guess you can ask, but the person does not have the requirement of identifying themselves as a CHL holder. All right. So, that's the requirements of the Campus Carry law. Next subject, concealed handgun license requirements. You know, I think it's important to understand, what does it take to get a CHL, because that's who we're dealing with. And so, we'll run through these fairly quickly, but basically, you gotta be 21 years of age. All right? That's the first requirement. And you have to complete a process, classroom training, pass a written exam, a proficiency demonstration, and whoever you get trained by has to be certified by the Texas Department of Public Safety to provide that training. And then, basically, you have to be a law-abiding citizen. I mean, I've referred to it several times, that CHL holders are substantially law-abiding citizens, because they have to be to get the license. No felony convictions, no A or B misdemeanor convictions. If you don't know the levels, the only one below that is Class C, and that's like a ticket. Okay? So, no B or A in the last five years, no felonies, or not currently charged with an A or B or under indictment for a felony, not a fugitive from justice, that would make sense, not chemically dependent, you're capable of exercising sound judgment in the storage and the proper use of your weapon, haven't made any misrepresentation on your application, and then TBS does a background investigation. So it's not just like, go show up, get a license. There's a lot of requirements, it's a thorough process, and as I've said, the people that have CHLs are exceedingly law-abiding people. And then I put for additional information, and then there's that website there, and that doesn't help very much. What I do is I Google, you know, and I wanna read up on it, I just Google Texas Department of Public Safety concealed handguns, and voila, there's the website. So, if you wanna find more about the eligibility and eligibility factors. So, what do we know about Texas CHL holders? First, we know it's about 3% of the population, so that's the first thing, about, in 2014, approximately 3% of Texas residents had a CHL, so we know that. We know, generally speaking, they're older, all right? I won't say old, but they're older. All right? So 86% are over 30, 67% are over, so 2/3 of them are over 40 years of age. And I think this, you know, I've said it a couple times, they're exceedingly law-abiding. And this, and the next slide, kind of is data that supports that, or evidence that supports that. And so, what it's basically showing is that Texas DPS, you can get this from the same website I just said, just Google concealed handguns, it's there. Texas DPS puts out data every year, yes, it's 2013, criminal justice professor, welcome to criminal justice data. We usually run two years behind, it's the latest that's available, I checked it like two days ago, 2014's not there. So, what they do is, they track convictions, and then convictions that involve CHL holders. And so what this says is, of all criminal activity that occurred in the state of Texas, basically 51,000 convictions in 2013, and 158 of them were CHL holders. So that's all criminal activity, and it's 1/3 of 1%. But what really people are concerned about, I think, regarding Campus Carry and CHL holders is that there's gonna be a spike in violence. And so, these are traditional violent crimes. If you're in criminal justice, we talk about murder, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault as being index crimes or part of the uniform crime reports that the FBI puts together every year, so these are the main core violent crimes. So we have murder, aggravated sexual assault, sexual assault, aggravated robbery, robbery, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, assault with a bodily injury, and then terroristic threat. The first column, total convictions, is how many convictions were there in 2013 for those particular offenses? And that looks like 13,746. Okay, I wrote it down straight here. But that column is 13,746, all convictions. How many of them involve people with CHLs? 31. 31. And that's .225%, so even less than the 1/3 of 1% thing. So again, just, the point of all that is, both from the requirement standpoint and from the data standpoint, is all the evidence points to CHL holders, which are the ones that are gonna be allowed to carry on campus, are exceedingly law-abiding citizens. All right. So what does it mean to us? What's gonna happen at UNT? Well, we can't have people self-identify, right? So just doing some basic math, we got about 42,000 people, that includes students and employees, so 37,000 students, 5,000 employees, rough estimates. Applying that 3%, right, 3% of the Texas population has a CHL, that would be the estimate then, if someone were to ask me, we got about 1,250 CHL holders on campus. All right? And that includes everybody, that's students, that's faculty, and that is staff included. Residents halls specifically, we got over 6,200 people living in residence halls this semester, but first eligibility requirement for a CHL is you gotta be 21 or older, there's only 500 of them about. And since, you know, the other slide on age, about 86% of CHL holders are 30 years of age or older, we really don't expect very many CHL holders to live in the UNT residence halls. If you have questions about how we're going to handle that, I'm sure members of the panel can fill us in on how we plan on or looking at dealing with residence halls, but from a magnitude standpoint, there's just not gonna be that many of them. That's what, at least, the data tells us. Also, we've had concealed carry for almost 20 years, 1997 is when the Texas Legislature passed concealed carry, so the concealed handgun license. And so, UNT PD went back to 1997, when the law was originally enacted, and they have no cases of anybody basically being arrested, et cetera, for the criminal offenses of basically carrying a weapon onto campus, 'cause currently, until August 1, 2016, it's against the law. And so, we haven't experienced people that are CHL holders bringing guns onto campus. But I also wanna tell you, we're not alone. All right? We're one of eight states that have Campus Carry. And the one with the longest history is Colorado. They got it in 2003. So I'm gonna tell you what we know about Colorado. Colorado State University, similar to us, little bit smaller, but over 30,000 students. Since 2003, when they got Campus Carry in their state, they have no incidents of CHL holders displaying or discharging a firearm, so no incidents. Colorado Boulder, so the main CU campus, one accidental discharge, employee in the dental school showing her handgun to someone, it discharged accidentally, she was fired, and that's the only one that they have experienced. So, we need to hear from you. That was the presentation, but we need to hear from you. So, how do you stay informed and how do you voice your opinion? Well, we have our campuscarry.unt.edu website up and running. It's got an overview of the law, what we're doing, it has the 23-member task force, it has some frequently asked questions on there, and as we hear things, we'll keep adding to those frequently asked questions, but it also has a share your thoughts column. So therefore, you can fill out the web form and tell us what you think, and that will go to the committee for review, 'cause here's the deal, we got a room with, I don't know, 100 people in it, and not everybody's gonna be comfortable saying something in front of 100 people, but if you've got something to tell us, you have an avenue to do that. All right? So it doesn't just end today when we leave. Just fill out the share your thoughts, or email us, campuscarry@unt.edu, and that will get to the committee as well. Thank you for letting me say that all in one breath. I'm gonna grab my water, and now I'm just gonna open it up to questions, comments, and then if, again, I'm the Chair of the Campus Committee Task Force, Professor and Chair of Criminal Justice, but I may not be the best person to answer your question, I got all kinds of smart people right there that we'll drag up here. All right?
If you have a question, we'll bring a microphone to you.
If you have a que, if you have a question, we'll, we'll bring a microphone to you.
Just for greater clarification, is it the task force's job to make the criteria for the gun-free zones? Like...
Yes. So, so it's not so much the criteria, it's just that we're going to list the specific locations in which are gonna be those gun-free zones. And so, that's what we need input in from you and from others, is what types of locations should be considered. And so, absolutely, those will be listed in the policy. And then, we, I'm sorry, I'm an academic, so I don't give like a two-sentence response. And then, and then, we also want in the policy a way to where we can add to the list, because buildings go up, buildings get refurbished and have a different purpose than they used to, programs, you know, get added, so we wanna process in place where this can kind of evolve over time as well.
But, there is no, like, the law doesn't state, this is a reason why this place can't have CHLs, right?
No. So, what the law states is, is kind of verbatim, what was in that PowerPoint slide, it basically allows universities to identify areas in which campus carry is not allowed, but it can't be so broad that it nullifies the law, and that's pretty much all the law states. Yes?
Hi, I appreciate you being here and holding this town hall for us, it's very informative. I just had a question about, you said that the police officers would be enforcing, like, a CHL holder maybe showing a handgun, is there going to be some sort of reporting system, just in case, like, I'm in class and I see a gun accidentally, or someone is showing their gun on purpose, is there gonna be some sort of reporting system, or like, how would that work, because the police officers wouldn't be able to be in every classroom and all that stuff?
True. Do you want me to answer that, Chief Reynolds? Okay. So, we have asked for that to be included as part of the policy, and so, we want part of the policy to include, like, a, how do you report a violation? And then, that will be implemented into the current safety and security seminars that go on, on campus for faculty, staff, and students. So, but, in general, the general message is gonna be, if there's at any point in time where you feel unsafe because of the presence of a weapon, then you need to call UNT PD immediately.
Okay.
But we're, we're going to, we're going to include that, or we want to include that, as part of the policy, a reporting mechanism for violations.
Yes. I also, just had another question about when, I know that there's gonna be specific places you're trying to try to make gun-free zones, just for transparency purposes, when will those be posted online, or how are you guys going to show what the plan will look like before it actually goes into place? And is it going to be reported as it moves along from your committee to the, to the president, to the Board of Regents, who also ultimately makes the decision, ultimately makes the decision?
Yes.
So... Sorry!
Wait a minute, I, I tried to give the non-academic answer and said yes, so now let me give it to academic. Yes. You know, the reality is, is we want this to be a transparent process. So, right now, we're filming this, and so, all this is gonna go online, all seven of them are gonna go online for everybody to see. And so, as we make progress, which is, you know, I said, share your thoughts, keep informed, et cetera, we're gonna add things to Campus Carry website. And that will be what we're considering, to be those areas in which, that will be declared gun-free zones. We don't wanna make that decision in a vacuum, and so, those will be part of that consultative process. And, you know, we've toyed with ways to do that, put it on the website, ask people to solicit input on it, talked about doing surveys, you know, an online survey saying, look, these are the seven areas we've identified, give your thoughts, whatever. But absolutely, it's not, don't think of it as, you know, we have these discussions today, and then February 2016, the Board of Regents pops out a, a policy, and you haven't had any involvement in it, is we want it to be as transparent and as collaborative as possible.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious on, similar to her question, what sort of criteria are you personally looking for in the, the gun-free zones? I understand you don't wanna answer that in a vacuum, but, like, what do you think is criteria that, like, you'll be looking at, the board will be looking at?
You know, I don't, uh, well, I'll, I'll answer it in two ways. If you've ever had me in class, I drink a lot of water while I'm in class. I'm also a board writer, and they don't have a board in here, so I'm kind of upset. Okay, so, you know, you asked the question, what do I think? You know, a reporter asked that earlier, and I think what I think is largely irrelevant. And the reason is this, is, is that the president has charged me to be the chair of the task force, and I don't have a personal agenda regarding this, you know, and I don't, I don't think I should have the conversation of, you know, this should happen or that should happen. I think it should come from you, and then let us be the assessors of that, almost kinda like, to use a, I'm also like to teach research methods, so to use the content analysis term is to analyze that content, determine those areas. But, you know, when you talk about criteria, so that's the first answer, is, is that, to me, what I think's irrelevant. People have asked me, and it's just, I mean, what I think, whether I'm forward, against it, think this place, whatever, my job is to get a policy to the president that represents the input of the university campus, and that, that's what I'm gonna do. The, the second point is, though, is that regarding the criteria is, is that, you know, we've, we really haven't sat around the table, and we've had three meetings so far, the task force, and really, those meetings have focused on getting the website up, and then the FAQs and getting some information out, and then really planning for these town halls, because, you know, they don't just appear magically. And so, we really haven't focused on those particular areas. But, the one I always give, and it's, you know, I guess maybe it can be considered a personal one, is the Child Development Lab, because it's a daycare center. So, I think that would be on the list. Maybe there's arguments against that, I don't know. But we haven't gotten to a point of laying out, these are the criteria, or these are the locations. You know, the only thing I can tell you for sure, not collegiate sporting events, because it's already not allowed by law. So, if something's going on at Apogee, while it's going on at Apogee and it's in a collegiate sporting event, it can't happen. And I know that was a terribly nonspecific, non-helpful answer. Sorry.
I wanted to ask some questions. You, you mentioned law-abiding citizens, but, you know, cops have killed people, innocent people too, and so, I'm a little bit confused on like, what we're gonna be, if we're gonna be talking about law-abiding citizens, or whatever that means. What I thought was interesting was the comparison of your stats of the CHL holders to the student population. You had mentioned before that they were 3% of the population, and then they tended to be older, but we're a much younger demographic, and if we're looking at school shootings, they tend to be young, white men. So, what are we gonna be doing to make our people of color here on campus feel safer with this, you know, happening at our campus?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I can address both issues. The reality is, anything can happen. I mean, I, I'm, I provided you with evidence and with data, reliable and valid data, so good data, but anything can happen. I mean, and that's what has happened throughout the country with these school shootings, is, is that nobody that was involved with those school shootings, except for probably the shooter himself, or on occasion herself, thought, this is gonna happen on our campus today. And, and, and so, yes, bad things can happen, and we do have, you know, safety seminars, training seminars, where we try to convey that information out to the students, and to faculty, and to staff. Regarding the, what was your second issue? I'm sorry, I forgot it. Fire away. What was the second?
I guess, just what are y'all gonna do to help us feel safer?
Yeah, okay.
But there's been so many shootings within the last few weeks.
Right. I, well, I, I am hopeful, by planning this presentation the way that I did, that today helps a little bit. You know, people have asked me, and the reality is this, there is not, to my knowledge, a single active shooter on a campus that has been a CHL holder. I mean, so, we can't confound campus carry with campus shootings, active shooter situations. They are two largely separate issues. And, I mean, we do things, and I'm sure UNT PD can talk certainly more specifics than what we do regarding active shooters, but here's what I've told people that have, that have said, well, what would you have to say about an active shooter on campus? And what I would have to say is this, is that, again, being a social scientist and an academic, the evidence would tell me that not knowing anything about that event, that person's not a CHL holder. That, again, those people are largely exceedingly law-abiding citizens, that's what I'd say. Doing anything about active shooters or anything, are you good? Okay. Yes?
Can I speak, Nick? Alright, so, my question is, just for clarification, to make us feel safer, we are using these meetings, so we decide which locations will be gun-free, restricted gun-free zones, will we be the ones helping decide, or will y'all just take our opinions through this committee, and y'all decide for yourselves which ones should be necessary?
Well, well, in the end, we're, we're seeking your input. You're not gonna decide, but you know what? The task force isn't gonna decide either, because it goes to the president, and then the president decides. And then, you know what? He didn't decide either, because if you look at the PowerPoint slide, the Board of Regents decides. And so, they're the ones that get the policy in the end, and they can make any provisions and amendments they want to, and they are final. And so, really, everything, including what we're doing as a task force, is input, it's not a final decision, until the Board of Regents signs off on it, and they can. And, and you know, the, the reality is this, hopefully, we've done a good enough job of communicating, getting input from everybody, working with the committee, that the president and then the Board of Regents don't make changes, but they have the authority to do so. Which one is? He just asked. He's done, he asked his question, he's done. Yes?
So, if CHL holders are so well-trained, and they're law-abiding citizens, why would you wanna keep them out of areas? In other words, wouldn't you want fewer areas, since most shooting hap, shootings happen in gun-free zones?
Okay, can you repeat? Woo! Okay, I was, did y'all like all plan on that or something, or that's like spontaneous? Can you just repeat the very last thing? Like, the last sentence? I got the first part.
Wouldn't you want fewer areas that are gun-free, since most shootings happen in gun-free areas?
Since most shootings happen in gun-free areas?
Yeah, when you...
Is that true?
Yes.
I know, CJ Professor, you think like, you know, I know, I know stuff, but I don't know that answer. So, most shootings occur, most mass shootings occur in areas that are gun-free zones?
Correct.
That people are not allowed? Wow. Pencil that down, and I'll look that up and verify it. You know, to me, it comes, it becomes the issue of what's best for the student body at UNT, 'cause this is gonna be a UNT-specific, so that's how I'd answer it, it's gonna be a UNT-specific policy. So, we, what we decide here at UNT may be different than what UT, Texas A&amp;M, Texas Tech, whoever decides. And so, you know, we may have fewer restrictions than others, and I've heard that some are looking at, for example, excluding them from classrooms. To me, that nullifies the intent of the policy. And that's, that's my hat. I mean, I know we got 23 people on the committee, and they're all, are gonna have input, and all of you are gonna have input, but my, as chair, my job is, is to make sure that we don't nullify the law. And so, we're not gonna have, we are not going to have things that are so broad that they nullify the intent. There's gonna be some places. I don't know, I mean, throughout the Child Development Lab, other than that, I don't know what those places are gonna be. But the reality is this, is, is that when you talk about guns and, and gun control, it's a very heated topic. It's one of, when I teach a class called Senior Seminar in our, in our discipline, we get into that discussion, because people are passionate and emotional about it. And so, it, it's, it's a sensitive topic, and there's not gonna be a policy that makes everyone happy. I mean, it's just not gonna make everyone happy, but it's gonna fit within the intent of the law.
Yes. I'm unfamiliar with concealed handgun licensing laws, saw what you had in the slide there, but say that we do have an active shooter scenario, is there anything involved in the training, getting your CHL, that will prevent these law-abiding citizens from taking the law into their own hands?
I, I don't know enough about the, the training to know what is, what is trained? Okay, you wanna answer it? Alright, he's gonna answer the question.
Sir, I'm a, I'm a CHL instructor, certified by DPS to teach CHL courses, I've been so certified since 2010. I can tell you that the class, as it currently stands right now, there is at least an hour on nonviolent dispute resolution, which is part of the class, there is a part on safe storage, and there is a vast discussion during the portion of the four-hour course, essentially about shoot, no-shoot scenarios, where I can at least tell you, in my experience as an instructor, and with every other instructor I know, is the main thing we tell people is, if you can escape, do it, because it's a lot safer most of the time, and it's certainly gonna be less expensive.
Thank you. Can you come with me to the other six, please? Just wanna get these kind of questions, you can answer them. Yes?
Actually, I wanted to address the active shooter scenario that you were talking about. One of the things that we got sidetracked on last night while talking about active shooters in our poli sci class, my professor, you know, started talking, freaking out a little bit, talking about the organ shooting. She started getting really nervous, talking about having to get body armor, you know, and she started talking about open carry. And that's one of the reasons why I decided to come up here, because, you know, we started talking about open carry on campus, and I thought, huh, I thought this was an open carry forum. So, I'm glad I came up here, because, you know, there's a lot of this was misconstrued. So, I'm glad, you know, I came up here, 'cause I was not actually a proponent for open carry. I am a, you know, proponent for CHL, but one of the things that I am not is an open carry proponent for anybody on campus. I think that it certainly would be, you know, detriment to, you know, campus learning.
And we, we have a simple solution to that, specifically outlawed by statute.
Absolutely. But as far as the active shooter that you were concerned about, one of the things that I addressed is, I'm very grateful to be in a country that we are able to come in and learn in an environment where nobody is coming in here to kill us, because we have a female teacher. I'm very grateful to be in a country where nobody is coming in here to kill you, because you're a female student, or to kill anybody else, because I've been in those countries. You can shake your head, but I've been in those countries.
Is it better to go down the aisle, making that compare?
No.
It's a different situation?
No. It's not, it's an everyday, it's an everyday occurrence in the... It's an everyday occurrence in those countries. It's a copycat, it's a copycat scenario. I'm just very grateful to be in this country, where it's just a once-in-a-blue-moon thing. It's...
Do you have a question for me?
No, I just wanted to say that it's a very minute thing. And to have a CHL person here on campus that may, or, you know, may be in your class, that if their back is against the wall, and there is no escape, that might be the person that might be able to save your life, or might be the person that, you know, will be able to shield you. Thank you.
Hi. So on the topic of mass education for people who may not be informed about CHL laws or what to do in specific scenarios, I know that UNT has previously run programs like Haven regarding alcohol, drug use, domestic violence and such. And I was wondering if there might be any way to do something similar regarding scenarios that might arise related to CHLs? And whether or not these scenarios may be likely, just so that the student populace might be informed?
Do you want to take that, or you just want me to answer the short, non-academic yes? And I was told earlier that actually the April, April one is going to be on active shooters, but this is Elizabeth with...
The only thing I will tell you is there will be an education component. So once the policy is in place, it's our responsibility as an institution to make sure we educate our campus community. There has been some education on safety on our campus that we will include this piece too, but I anticipate that we're going to work on making sure that all of our new students at orientation understand exactly what this law means, and make sure that our continuing students understand it as well, and also faculty and staff. I don't know what that'll look like. I can't tell you exactly what it is, but once the policy is in place, we certainly will work on the education component.
Thank you.
I might, one of the reasons I came here tonight was because I was appointed, so to speak, to speak for the Texas Marksmen Student Organization here on campus. I've been involved with the club since 2010 as one of their instructors. As I mentioned, I am a CHL instructor. We've been giving CHL courses free of charge to UNT students every semester since approximately 2010. I've personally trained many UNT students in these courses at no charge to them, have found them to be just as competent, just as professional, if not more so than the adult or, well, that's more, the older population.
I'm trying not to take that personal, but okay. I don't know what I'm trying to say.
You'd be one of the younger students than the older students. And one of the things that we're here to present is, we would like for, as of right now, the law already allows for people to have concealed handguns in the parking lots of campuses and on the sidewalks. It's simply about campus buildings, which is what the new law is about. We believe that the law should permit campus carry to the greatest extent possible throughout University of North Texas, including classrooms. Obviously, as you and some of the other ladies and gentlemen mentioned, there might be some areas, I mean, for example, I was not a chemistry major. If there's a chemistry lab where there's tanks of something that might blow up, I can obviously see where that might be a reasonable place to say, okay, we're not going to have weapons in here, because even the muzzle flash could set something off. I mean, obviously, there's got to be limitations and responsibilities that come with all rights, but it's our belief that any policy that would restrict the carrying of firearms in classrooms generally would certainly violate the letter, if not the spirit, if not the letter of the law. And you also mentioned on your slide as far as provisions for storage in residence halls. I, as a coach, it's something that I would definitely like the task force to consider. A lot of people here with me today have competed with handguns in a safe and professional manner in competitions throughout Texas and several other states. We've been to Kansas, we've been to Louisiana, we've been to Oklahoma for competitions. And one of the challenges we have for our younger members is, regardless of whether they have a CHL, if they want to have a handgun or some other firearm, it's very difficult for them to find a safe place for them to store that, so that they can retrieve it and take it off-campus to use in lawful shooting activities. So I know you mentioned it on the PowerPoint, so that is an issue that I'd definitely like to see your committee to address, Mr. Chairman.
And we will.
I would also like to thank you for putting this on. I wanted to address a couple of things before I ask my question. A couple of people have asked about the active shooter thing. And as a gun owner and someone who has practiced martial arts, all of those, if anybody doesn't know, all of those types of activities, it's paramount that the instructor instructs us about safety. I mean, they're called gun safety courses for a reason. It's not, "Go get your gun right away" kind of course. It's gun safety. Again, we're taught that if you have a gun, you must be the most responsible person in the world, because it is so powerful and so potentially dangerous. And with martial arts, the same thing, like, if you can run away, do it, before you cause harm to yourself or anybody else. So I just wanted to address that. Gun safety courses, again, they teach us to be safe before anything else. My question regards, again, the active shooter scenario. I know myself and many other gun owners, we hear about these gun, these shootings on campuses, and we think, oh my gosh, only if I'd been there, maybe this could have been avoided. And so I'm just wondering, since we have this law in place now, effective next August, is there going to be some loophole regarding if there is an active shooter and a CHL holder tries to, you know, take that shooter out, or tries to make the scenario as safe as possible? Is there going to be a loophole where they're going to be prosecuted because they showed their weapon or something like that?
That's you, Ed. Chief Reynolds is up. I knew I'd get you up eventually.
I think specifically what you mentioned in Texas law, those exemptions already exist. So if you have a firearm and you use it in the protection of yourself or someone else, you're not going to be prosecuted for any offense. Does that make sense? That law's been on the books, and I don't see that changing.
Thank you. Who has, yes?
Hi, my name's Epi. I'm with Open Carry Texas. I apologize, I showed up 30 minutes late because of traffic. I drove from Dallas. I want to show you something. This is my two permits. I got one from Arizona and one from Texas. I am a law-abiding CHL holder. I practice safe gun control at home. I teach my daughter, she's six years old, how to shoot as well. She knows how to shoot, she knows how to be responsible around it as well. Now, does that mean I leave it out hanging on my desk? Absolutely not. One thing you need to understand is, as a CHL holder, we are, there is a percentage of a percentage of percentage chance that I'm going to commit a crime. I have no intention of committing a crime. In fact, before I walked into this building today, I made sure to disarm myself, because I know the, as law as it is right now says I cannot carry inside this building, and I assure you, I'm not going to break that law. I'll show you right now. You can see, right now, my holster is empty. I don't know any CHL holder that will do anything to cause them to lose that right. And I really think everyone is... Oh, okay. Just want you to understand that. The shootings that you see on campus, the ones that you see, these bad stuff you see on television, it isn't somebody who went through a training class. It isn't somebody who went through an extensive background check. It is some crazy guy that's off his meds or needs to be medicated, and he somehow grabbed a gun from somewhere. And there's all these things about, there's loopholes and this and that, but you understand, if somebody is determined, they're going to get a gun one way or another. I don't know how they do it, but that's why they do it. I have my, I carry my weapon. I went and got it, I purchased it at a store, I ran through, I went through another background check to purchase that weapon. I'm not going to give up that right just so I can go and cause harm to somebody. That weapon is for myself, my protection, and my family's protection. I have a wife who's only 28 years old. She works late at night. Do you think I would let her ride the train at night? She works, she works in Dallas, I don't know if y'all know the area too well, but she has to ride the train sometimes, and it gets pretty sketchy. But she carries a little pistol on her, and she's got her CHL as well. And there's no way she's ever going to pull that up unless it's an absolute emergency, if it's life or death, and that's what we're trained to do. So anyone that says that a CHL holder is going to go out and just shoot up the neighborhood, that's not going to happen. Statistically, a police officer, no offense, sir, is more likely to commit a crime. Statistically, more, is more likely to commit a crime, according to DPS statistics. So we're talking about a percentage of a percentage of a percentage of CHL holders have committed a crime. And most of these are, most of these are nonviolent crimes. That's all I want to say. Thank you all.
Okay. My name is Brittany Burnham. I just have some things to address. From, I feel like people have a right to be upset, just because it makes people nervous, this law, and I appreciate y'all for having this meeting, because it's something that Greg Abbott signed into effect. And so it's something we, if we have a problem about it, we definitely should call him out on it. But in regards to, I understand what she's saying, because as being a person of color and seeing all the issues on these campuses with shootings, TSU didn't just have only one shooting made national news, they actually had three in a week. In regards to a guns, getting a gun license, I don't believe there is a psychological test you have to take in order to get one. And someone that has anxiety, like, it just makes me nervous with having guns on campus. I have really bad anxiety. And so, to me, is there, I understand y'all are saying bylaw, because y'all can't, I guess people are not allowed to identify if they're concealed hand licensed. And is there, I guess, wondering if there's anything like to, way y'all can work a way around that? Because that kind of just worries me, but like I said, I understand that's something the governor has signed and effect, so I mean, that's nothing that has to do with y'all. And moving on, the Board of Regents, I understand they sign everything. Is there any way we can get their information in case something does happen where the students don't like it, and then we can contact them?
They, they... No. They, if you, you know, you probably normally go to unt.edu. If you go to untsystem.edu, I didn't know if there was a unt. So untsystem.edu, there's actually a Board of Regents link, and it's got all the Board of Regents on it.
And can I be put on the website as well?
Like a link to the Board of Regents?
The campus carry.
The link to the unt system website?
Yeah, well, like their information, just in case, because I understand y'all, as the committee, y'all can't make the exact, like, final say, so is there a way that can be put on the information, like, all the information in regards to the process? And I wanted to know...
Kelly, quit looking at me. Kelly? Kelly, 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 Kelly. Excuse me, the URCM, so she handles the website stuff. I mean, all of our names are on it. I don't see why we can't put it on there, but... Okay. Yeah, so that'll get you to the Board of Regents.
And is there a list on the website, a list of the organizations and things on the website that are on the committee?
There's a list of all 23 task force members and their affiliation. So like, mine's chair, but like, some, some are, their job is something, but they're representing Staff Senate, or Faculty Senate, or Student Government Association, or that type of thing. So the name and their affiliation, basically, who they are, what entity they are representing is on the website. All 23 of us, I believe there is, of us now.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to say thank you for hosting this. But also, I was wondering, will the president and Board of Regents be watching these meetings or coming to some of these meetings to hear the student input and hear what we have to say?
I know that they are, they have been put, I don't hang out with the Board of Regents. I mean, so I don't know about them, but I know that every single one of these is on the president's, all seven of them is on the president's calendar, and if he is able to make them, he will make them. So I'm sure he'll show up at one or two or whatever, but he will be Board of Regents. I don't know them. I'm going to, I'm going to go with no.
Okay. Will these meetings be made public to them, so that they can see some of the issues or some of the problems that we are concerned with?
Yeah, so what's happening is, is one of these cameras is recording this, or all these cameras are, I don't know. But they're all being, all seven forms are going to be recorded, and they're all going to be loaded onto the Campus Carry website, I'm assuming, right? That's where they're going. So they'll go to the Campus Carry website, and then the world will have access, access to them. And actually, part of the reason why we are recording these is just for people to be able to see what was said, whether that's the president, but also our entire task force is in here too, and they want to see what has transpired during the town hall meetings as well.
All right, thanks. And I also just wanted to make the comment on, because you talked about how you don't want, you would not like the CDL to be a place for concealed handguns. Just wanted to second that, because as a child development and family studies major, I think it'd be, I would feel safe, and I feel like, I would feel that the children there are safer, and the parents as well would feel safer if that area in the building, the Matthews Hall, was also a gun-free zone, so...
Thank you. One clap, that's it, good. One clap, that'll be a good, a whole bunch of claps. Okay. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just had a question. I know you said, like, classrooms would be too broad of a, send and confuse, and have no guns allowed in the classrooms, and there'll be no point to the law, but like, I guess it's more a question for the teacher form, but would teachers individually have to be able to say that my classroom is a gun-free classroom? Because I know one of them, they mentioned that teachers felt uncomfortable about it. So like, would teachers be able to make that decision for their classroom?
See, I said it three times.
No?
Like, that I can say in one word, a non-academic phrase, no. I mean, the reality is, is that all quote-unquote "gun-free zones" have to be approved by the Board of Regents. Nobody else has the authority to say, "Well, my office is gun-free, so if you're a student of mine, don't be bringing it in my office." It can't be done. It cannot be done.
Could the Board of Regents, like, let teachers make that decision? Like, could the Board of Regents say, "We allow our teachers to designate their classrooms as gun-free zones if they see fit," or something to that effect?
What? Wouldn't, I'm hearing no. Because I'm like, I never thought of that, but, all right, we got him back up off the chair.
A big portion of the law is being able to advertise where these areas are and the locations, so any impromptu or location instructor decides, "I don't want them in my office today," that's not going to meet the intent.
I could just carry a sign around with me. So no, they won't be able to. And we've asked, and when I say we've asked, because the Office of General Counsel, the legal folks are involved in this as well, writing the policy to make sure it applies with the law, but we've asked for inclusion in the policy about kind of do's and don'ts from the faculty, staff, employee standpoint, or supervisor standpoint. In other words, me as chair, you know, I can't say, "Well, I'm not hiring anybody that has a CHL and is going to carry on campus." I can't do that, and so I think we have to spell that out in policy. And so no, the faculty member that is nervous, like this Joe Mo mentioned, if we don't designate classrooms, which I believe is too broad, she will not be able to designate it as a gun-free zone. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I wanted to make two points. I entered as a freshman here in 2013, and we had to do a program online called Alcohol at EDU. And I feel like if there was something similar, it's like, it told us pretty much all the dangers of alcohol, and we had to do like this whole, watch these videos and see like a whole scenarios about like, what to do in certain situations regarding alcohol. I feel like there should be something similar with that for campus carry as well, that all university students should go through, because it affects everyone pretty much. And also, my second point is that the gun holders that we, that the people who have stood up and said they are gun holders, why do you guys feel that people who don't have guns, like, we should be so forgiving and feel safe with you around, when there are active shooters who are, like, not, they don't have guns... When there are active shooters who are like not, they don't have, they're not gun holders, licensed gun holders, like we don't feel safe?
I think that... I, well... Okay, he's gonna answer.
The reason you should feel safer is because we went through a background check repeatedly, extensive background check, F B I, NICS check, to make sure that we have a clean record and we have nothing showing up on our medical history. Correct, correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Exactly. However, we've never committed a crime. We're never, go ahead, I'll let you take this one over.
The requirements for the Texas C H L law are actually a little bit more stringent than the chairman put on the slide. Some people in here might be familiar with the concept of deferred adjudication for a crime and say, oh, well, maybe they did it, but it was deferred or something like that. Well, under the Texas C H L law, the deferred adjudication counts as a conviction. That's one of the only areas under Texas law where a deferred adjudication would count as a conviction for C H L. So not only can you not have been convicted of these crimes for a period of time, but you can't have been put on deferred adjudication for them. Furthermore, disorderly conduct misdemeanor, which is a class C misdemeanor, is also a disqualifier for a period of time. Furthermore, when it talks about chemically dependent persons, for example, driving while intoxicated is a class A misdemeanor. Says on the PowerPoint, five years. Well, if someone picked up another, let's say, a marijuana charge, that's two convictions. They would be considered by D P S, a chemically dependent person would be prohibited from care, from obtaining a C H L for a period of ten years. If someone is a C H L holder and they commit a crime, not only are they, is their license revoked for that period, but they actually add an extra two years on to it. So where they would otherwise be prohibited for five, they're a C H L holder, were convicted of a, let's say, a class B misdemeanor, driving while intoxicated, they would actually be prohibited for seven years because they were a C H L holder and they should have known better. Is essentially how it was explained to me when I was going through my class to become an instructor. These are overly law-abiding people. I said, I've personally trained a lot of them. I'm not really sure how I can better respond to your question. These mass shootings that you're talking about, I'm sure make for very good, very good and very compelling television, but it's just not the reality of C H L holders.
And did that answer your question?
I wanted to reply to him.
You're gonna, what do I?
I'm going to reply to him.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you said that C H L holders, they're exceedingly law-abiding citizens. Well, C H L holders are not the only people who have guns in this world, so we still, people can still feel unsafe. No matter how much you talk about the class B misdemeanors and all of that, people just still don't feel safe. And this Campus Carry law is just an added factor of like why we aren't safe in this world as people anyway.
Okay, so I'm gonna, okay. So, so, I mean, I think the, this is my conceptualization of, of the issue is, is that... I mean, I've said it, you know, C H L holders are exceedingly law-abiding citizens. I mean, but Campus Carry applies specifically to them. What the topic has kind of delved into is our gun culture, which is really kind of like active shooter Campus Carry. It's a separate discussion. You're right, other people have weapons. But when we're talking about Campus Carry and the policy that we're crafting, it does apply specifically to those C H L holders. Now, are there other weapons, other handguns on campus by non-C H L holders? You know, for a microcosm of society, the safe answer would probably be yes. Who's next?
Hi, thank you again for having this meeting.
I thought you were doing the camera.
Yeah, I'm doing both.
Oh, wow, okay, multitask, very good.
You said basically you can prohibit certain classrooms, excuse me, I've lost my voice. What about the T A Ms program that we have here at U N T? It's the, basically eleventh and twelfth graders. It's the equivalent of high school. So how would you, how would you do that?
I mean, we're gonna, kinda like I said, we're taking people's comments under, you know, advisement and then we'll put those together and then we'll put them into policy and we'll give people, well, we'll give people's feedback and then we'll put them in the draft policy that goes to the president. But I've heard from other people that there needs to be a restriction put really on McConnell Hall, which is where they live. Not so much them, because they go everywhere, but on the residence hall in which they live. I'm not saying, again, we haven't sat around the room and had the in-depth conversation about what's going on on the list, what's not, because we wanna hear from y'all, but that's...
Right, I just wanted to suggest that.
Yeah, that's what I've heard from some people is, is perhaps a way to do it is to just make McConnell Hall, which is where the T A M students live, because they're minors. And we need to protect the minors. We need to make that a gun-free building.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Yes?
I carried a weapon for the United States Army for four years. You say that your program is only four hours of training? A police officer has to recertify so often. So is there any refresher courses for these people that have C H L permits?
I don't know the answer. Fire away. Hey, you can burn my mic.
Alright, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just speak loudly. There used to be, to be honest with you, ma'am, the requirement, it used to be a ten-hour course initially and then every so often, there was a refresher course for C H L holders. That changed. That's something that the legislature did. I didn't necessarily agree with it, but what I do as a C H L instructor licensed by D P S is I have to follow the law. They've given me a curriculum, they've given me a time period, they've given me guidelines, they put me through training. If you don't, if you don't think it's enough, I mean, believe me, I think it could be longer, that's really an issue for the legislature.
So that wasn't a... So you're like, you're being like an academic, giving long answers like me. Okay.
Next. Thanks so much for holding this. It's very informative. I appreciate it a lot. I have two questions. One, just kinda piggybacking on something mentioned earlier about getting more student input. Is there a way of holding like a referendum or something like that, that goes beyond just our very specific comments here on the specific buildings you're looking at, maybe voting on the exact buildings instead of just soliciting information? And also doing that for maybe faculty as well? Maybe it's a survey, maybe it's tacking it on to the end of the student elections, something like that? I mean, you're gonna get a lot of people that run through and say yes to every single building, but you're gonna see a lot of variation and that may be places to look at going forward. So that's the first question. You can answer it if you want to, yeah.
I would say that, that we've talked, we've talked about doing a survey as the mechanism to do it. I'm, I'm not really sure on the referendum thing. Is that a student government associations thing or something? I don't know what that is, but an online, a survey, you know, this is a link that goes out to everybody that allows anybody that wants to, to provide input on. We're definitely considering it. It's probably the fastest, most efficient mechanism to get a great deal of feedback because, you know, if you look at your, your watch, I think it's, or, where's the watch nowadays? Right, I'm sorry, I'm old. Thank you. It's the middle of October, so we gotta be done in two months. So we gotta turn this around quickly. And so that's an easy, efficient way to get that kinda feedback.
Okay. And the second question, I'm a grad student and I'm a T A and I've also been an instructor. So I'm like every category you're trying to hit at, which is great. If you're looking for specific locations where you might wanna ban them, testing center in Sage. As a T A, we're constantly monitoring for cheating and Gun Holster is just one extra place. And since we can't ask students to self-identify or force them to self-identify anyway, that may be a place. It also is a chance for the university to save a lot of money so that, again, since you're, if you're in a regular classroom, you can't ban them. And that's another place you hide, you know, notes in a muzzle. Just because students may not break the law if they have a C H L, doesn't mean they're not gonna cheat on an exam. That, I mean, the stats for that are astronomical in comparison. So yeah, the university could save a lot of money on printing tests because that would encourage more professors to use the testing center and expand the testing center.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And my students don't cheat, but okay. Who's next? Yes?
I'll go ahead and talk from my laptop here. Before I get to my questions, I would like to say that none of what I have heard here makes me feel any safer about this law. I don't have any confidence in the practicality or effectiveness of this particular law to properly address an active shooter situation or any other potential gun violence on this campus. The Board of Regents, who I've heard again and again has the final say along with President Simotris on which spaces will be gun-free zones. They do not have to contend with the dangers and anxieties of gun violence on this campus. And quite frankly, I don't have the faith that they have our safety as their top priority. As a campus activist here at U N T, I have been met with harassment, sexist and racist slurs, threats of violence. I've even had a student perform the Nazi Hitler salute in my direction before he was arrested by U N T P D. It is this aggressive penchant for confrontation and violence that I have seen from several students on this campus as an activist that makes me question my safety here at U N T. And I fear that this aggression will only be exacerbated by the presence of guns on campus. When I took my political science one-on-one courses on this campus, I was told that we live in a civil society, one in which police and juries and court systems have a purpose and that purpose is to keep us safe and to ensure justice. What exactly is the point of these systems if the Texas legislature expects us to come to class every week anticipating to take the law into our own hands? My question being, in the event of an active shooter situation on campus, I imagine that at U N T will immediately be put on lockdown. My first question, would a C H L holder have the authority to decide to run around campus looking to take down the active shooter? My second question, will President Simotris and other top administrators' offices here on campus be gun-free zones? Because I believe that if we as students and faculty have to contend with the dangers of gun violence on this campus, then their offices should be Campus Carry zones, so they have to deal with it too.
You wanna answer the first question? I mean, to the answer to the second question, it is, I mean, the first question was active shooters, people with guns that are C H L holders running around in chaos.
I'm not a C H L holder, but I don't think that there's any part of the terrain, correct me if I'm wrong, that teaches you how to chase down someone that's an active shooter. Okay. So what I will say is every police officer that works for U N T, including all the city officers, we train together on responding to an active shooter situation. Now, that's obviously after the fact. We also have another mechanism, which is the Eagle Alert system, to try to push a message out when there's an immediate threat that's ongoing. On the, just step back aside, we have a care team on the campus that takes all this information in. If there's an issue with a student, faculty or staff, that there's a concern, so that we come together with the dean of students, human resources, the police, counseling and testing, and we look at those situations and just try to early on, reach out and get services or appropriate help for someone that may be in distress or in need. I think that may answer part of it.
Well, with my first question, if I could make it just a little bit more concise, what I, what I think about in the event of an active shooter situation and the campus goes on lockdown, I imagine that in classrooms in particular, it is the professor who, correct me if I'm wrong, I imagine has the authority to shut the door, lock the door. Everybody's on lockdown, you know, if you're on lockdown, you stay in the classroom. You're supposed to stay where you're at. So in the event of a C H L holder knowing that an active shooter is nearby, perhaps even in the building, do they have the authority to leave that classroom, to leave where they are in the event of a lockdown, to take justice into their own hands, which is essentially what this bill is?
I mean, I don't think there's any law that prohibits them to stay in one particular space. I think that the training would tell them that that's a law enforcement function. And that they're carrying a concealed weapon is for their protection and then if someone were to come in the room and they're in there, I think that that would be a different situation. But I don't see them as being someone that's chasing someone down actively on campus, not in my experience.
And me as a professor, I can't, I don't think I would have the authority to make anybody stay in the classroom that doesn't wanna stay inside.
So they could, you're saying that they could do that?
And you could go to your car. I mean, I mean, you can go anywhere you wanna go. So...
But I'm not the one running around with a gun, so...
Right, but you have, but I don't have the authority as a professor to mandate that my class all stay, all stay. If people wanna leave, I mean, you're an adult, you can make that choice. Regarding your second question, we still have not identified the areas regarding President Simotris or whoever's offices.
Are there any areas that have been discussed as gun-free zones?
No, that's why we're having these forums, to hear people talk about McConnell Hall and to talk about the testing center and those kinda places. No, we have not. That's why we're holding these forums, to hear from people of where they think should be gun-free zones. That's what we're allowed to carve out by law, except they can't be so broad. So I have, I don't know is the answer to whether or not President Simotris' office or whoever's office is gonna be considered a gun-free zone. There has to be justification for every decision that is made and that justification has to go to the Texas legislature. I mean, and that will be done every other year.
Thank you for answering my questions and just as a suggestion, I think Chestnut Hall in its entirety should be a gun-free zone. And particularly the third floor with the Health and Wellness Center and the Mental Health Center should be gun-free zones.
Thank you.
I know that there's a low chance, but I just had a question of where guns were gonna be stored if you do live in the dorms. I just want a better understanding of that. If there's a plan, if there's not.
Yeah, there's a subcommittee of the parent group that's looking at that as well. So again, feedback from anyone is readily accepted for that. There's no crystal answer or crystal ball that's got that in there. We're still looking at that.
And all I can tell you is what other universities, because again, we're not alone in Campus Carry. We are in Texas, new to it, but other states have had it for a long time. Usually it comes down to one of two things. It comes down to basically like hotel safes inside the dorm rooms or some secured facility. Sometimes it's at the police department with twenty-four-seven access where people check them in and check them out. That's not, I mean, that's what I've seen other universities do. I mean, do you have any blood left in your arm?
Yeah, barely.
Alright, where is that? He's, who's up? Okay, you, then you.
Yes, real quick, I'd like to address to your question. I didn't catch your name in the blue dress over there, but, and this is just kinda me speaking. Sorry, yeah, this is me speaking first, but I'm a C H L holder and I carry a weapon to protect myself, not nobody else. I'd kind of assume that a C H L carrier is just gonna run out and play Rambo. It's possible because there's always that one outlier, but like I said, myself personally, it's just for my personal protection. It's not to protect everybody else or go out and play Rambo like I said. And then to address your question about the, what the background check is for, it's basically there just to check to, it's like it's just a review of the character of the person to make sure that there's no markers, to show that they do have the propensity to commit a crime. So that's what the extensive background checks are for the C H L holders. But then the question for the task force is, are you seeking outside influence from like other I S Ds? I know our, our G L I S D is allowed to, their teachers to carry on campus and then like other universities. Have you sought outside information to see what they're doing, how they've implemented it or what?
Other universities, definitely. I mean, I don't, I mean, you mentioned an I S D.
Yeah, our R I L I S D.
From other universities, definitely, because we're all in the same boat. All state universities have, we're all following the same law. We all have the same timeframe, not so much with getting into the president of Board of Regents, but it takes effect August one of two thousand sixteen. So we're looking at what those other universities are doing. We are also working with, actively with our two sister institutions, if that's what they're called, the U N T Health Science Center and U N T Dallas as well in the policy. The one with no blood left in his arm.
That's me. But, so, as soon as I heard about this meeting, I started asking my peers questions, like, what are they really concerned about? Like, what's your number one concern? And I have this huge thing, but I'll just give you the one that keeps coming up here. And that is, what happens if there's like a mass shooting, an active shooter scenario? So, the question would be, in an active shooter scenario like the one that occurred at Virginia Tech, a student or faculty member with a gun would only make things worse, right? So, I started doing some research into this and looking into it and looking at accounts of what happened and other events similar. So, here's what I got. What is worse than allowing an execution-style massacre to continue uncontested? How could any action with the potential to stop or slow a deranged killer intent on slaughtering victim after victim be considered worse than allowing the killer to continue undeterred? Contrary to what the movies might have us believe, most real-world shootouts last only three to 10 seconds. Even the real gunfight at the OK Corral, a shootout involving nine armed participants and a number of bystanders, lasted only about 30 seconds and resulted in only three fatalities, none of which were bystanders. It is unlikely that an exchange of gunfire between an armed assailant and an armed citizen would last more than a couple of seconds before one or both parties were disabled. Even if it lasted the full 10 seconds, how could 10 seconds of two people shooting at each other possibly be worse than 10 minutes of an assailant walking up to victims and shooting them in the head some multiple times at point-blank range, as occurred at Virginia Tech?
Thank you. I didn't take that as a question. That was a statement, right?
I'm over here, actually. Yeah, sorry. As someone with PTSD, I grew up with guns around my life, forever, always had guns around. Guns just make me nervous. So, like, it doesn't matter if you have a license or not, guns make me nervous. So, what are you going to do for students who have issues of just like mental illness issues and like us having to be in class? Like, how am I supposed to concentrate? Like, I don't care if you have a license, there's a gun.
Right.
What, our, last week, I already like turned in assignments late because I had a panic attack because of the campus shootings. It doesn't matter if you have a license or not. Guns in classrooms making me nervous. And I don't know how I'm supposed to pay attention in class, and I know I keep repeating that, so...
Right.
Like, is there mental health resources? Like, are you going to push that for the rest of us who like have to deal with this shit?
Okay, I gotta, I gotta steal the mic. What'd you do with the microphone? Oh, now we got it borrowed back.
Hi, my name is Maury McGuinness.
Hello.
The...
There you are.
I'm the Dean of Students. I'm responsible for a lot of things that you're referring to. One is heading up the care team, which is here to help students that might be in distress, whether a threat to themselves or others, while they're dealing with anxiety. We see students every day in my office and get them connected to the right resources. So, whether there's the presence of guns or not, we see a lot of students that are dealing with anxiety. I think today we had eight, okay? And so, we have the mechanisms to always get those students in, see, see what's going on, and get them connected to the right resources, whether on or off campus. It's something that already exists, and we understand it.
But it's like, if I'm in class and I have to go to this class every couple of days and I know that there's going to be a gun there...
How do you know there's a gun there?
Well, like, because I don't believe that people aren't going to be like, oh, I might have a gun, I don't know, you can't ask me. Like, I don't, it doesn't matter, I don't trust any of these people, like, I don't care.
How about you and I meet individually and let's talk this through? And let's work, let's work on some resources that we have available already? And anybody, I'll open that up to you. But I will tell you, let's talk about that and let's talk about some of the resources we might already have that helps you thinking, whether it's in the classroom now or not.
I guess what I'm trying to like figure out is like, I guess the example would be, yeah, I don't know if they have a gun, but then if I do find out that they do, because you know, accidents happen, they might slip out or like, I don't know. And I don't ask, and I come back to class, and then I have to sit there knowing that someone sitting next to me has a gun. And I'm supposed to like focus? Like, it doesn't make any sense.
Absolutely. I get it. I get it. I do, I, I work with this every day. And I promise you, whether it's a gun or some other anxiety issue, we're, we help, okay? And I want to make sure you get to our office. Let's be proactive, let's talk about that proactively, so you can meet with me at any time. And let's work this, let's work this through for you. And I would recommend that you tell that to your friends as well. Thank you. You're welcome.
I would like to add on, well, a couple of things, but the TAMS, the lady that sat over there with the camera earlier, she's gone now, and then the child development place, I, as a CHL holder, I believe that those should be off limits to us because they are kids and we should not be allowed to carry guns there. Second, I'm a former Marine, and I'm for it, but I under-respect everybody's views in this room, even if they're against it. I understand everyone's frustration, but I will say this, even if you are against me or anybody else carrying a gun on campus, I'm not going to go around and hunt people, but I will still take a bullet for every single one of you if I have to, if there's a shooter. I will do it. Just want to say that. Even if you don't like me, I still respect you. This is the United States of America, everyone's entitled to their opinions. It's the way it should be from here until indefinite future. And I thank all of you for coming out and saying all of your views on this issue, no matter what it is. That's all I want to say.
Hi, I wanted to thank the committee for spending your time after hours after work to listen to our concerns. I just wanted to give a little bit of feedback to you guys. First thing I wanted to point out, you've noticed we've had a lot of CHL holders today that have self-identified. I want the committee to know that there are also CHL holders who prefer not to self-identify, people who don't want others to know that they have a CHL. And I would ask that you consider that when you're crafting, especially the housing policies. Things I've heard discussed in previous years would be possibly lockers at the front desk or turning, turning a gun into the staff instead of bringing it into the dormitory. Thing I would ask is that that may actually not be very, a very popular idea with CHL holders. It also can be a lot more dangerous. It's something I've thought about a lot. I think perhaps the most elegant solution for dormitories would be, since we're talking about a very small number of students over 21 years old, we're really talking primarily about upperclassmen, perhaps a mandate that if they choose to live on campus with a CHL, they have to live in a private room, mandate a small safe in the room, something along those lines. If not, the suggestion you mentioned of requiring them to turn it into the police station whenever they're going to be in their dormitory, I think there's a lot of merit to that idea as well. I've been affiliated with two other colleges where guns haven't allowed on campus, but they had to be locked up and restored with the campus police department. It worked great, it looked at those institutions, and it actually could appeal, I think, as well to some of the people who are concerned about CHLs on campus. One concern I've heard quite a bit is, well, what if a student gets stressed out and goes and picks a gun to their professor because they got a bad grade? If our students that live in campus housing have to go to the police station to check out their gun, that's actually a safety check. The police officer there who has to get the gun out will be able to see, if you've got a student who's agitated, who's really nervous, who's, you know, not looking in good condition, they can pull them aside and talk to him instead of just handing that gun over. Just some feedback for the committee. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to make a suggestion to you as the chair. As far as students have addressed the concern that maybe some of us don't want to be in rooms with guns. As far as making the no-gun areas, maybe there could be like a hall or a building where there is no guns, and then so students could see that when we register for classes. That way, it's not... So, say I have to take a psychology class...
Classroom or the residence halls?
The classrooms.
Got it.
So, so she was saying earlier that she would feel more comfortable in a room where she would know there's no guns. Well, if there was buildings where there couldn't be guns in those classrooms, maybe just for that case, maybe that would make some students feel more safe.
Thank you. You've been patiently waiting.
I had a question about the open carry.
Yes.
Because I know I've heard a lot about people saying that they would prefer that the child development lab, TAMS, and chemistry in labs where you have like a lot, a lot of flammable chemicals, be, be gun-free zones. Do you know if, since open carry is not applicable to college campuses, does that also include like public or private schools such as high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools?
Yes. Yes, so it, so, so the, in the open carry law, there is a longer list of institutions that are excluded from open carry. You know, so I said institutions of higher education, but K through 12, which I think is what you're asking, are equally excluded.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I have the terminology right. Open carry versus CHL is like one is visible and one isn't? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, why in the slides and even in the law itself is there such an emphasis on CHL versus open carry? Because for me, if some, if a gun is in a holster versus in a backpack, it doesn't make me feel any safer.
There's actually, there's actually, in the law, there's not, there are actually two separate laws. So, in the law, there's no confusion. Perhaps in the PowerPoint slides, I created confusion, and largely that's because there, we've heard from people that have been crossing those terms, and so we wanted to make sure that everybody understood they're really two, they're two different things, open carry versus open carry. But from a legal standpoint, they are separate legal statutes.
Howdy. My name's Cameron. I work at McConnell Hall for TAMS, along with my colleagues. I was really happy to hear that everybody was so, you know, worried about TAMS. I do urge you, along with McConnell Hall, think about McConnell Hall grounds. They do a lot of outside activities, so just keep that in mind. And my second thing is, I know we're trying to come up as like a tier-one institution. Do you think this provision or law would kind of make seniors from high school second-guess going to a public school in Texas?
I, I don't think so. I mean, you know, I don't have any evidence. Are you, you're asking for my personal opinion?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think it would because it's, it's Texas-wide, so there are tier-one institutions like UT and Texas A&amp;M that are going to have to abide by the law. There are private institutions that can opt out. They have to follow a process, but they can opt out of the law. So, I don't think it would have an impact on someone's decision-making, as long as we've done a good job in, in writing the policy and enacting the policy, and then a good job on the education of students, a lot of things. You know, we want students in the end to feel safe on campus, and, and as I've said, I don't think campus carry is going to impact the safety of students, but safety versus fear of are two different things. And so, we've got to do a good job of, of educating students and potential students about the safe environment that we do have here. Because if, think about Colorado State. I mean, Colorado State has had this for 12 years now. So, I mean, in 12 years, we can put on our website, you know, we've had no incidents. And, and so, I don't think it's going to have that type of impact. Yes, sir?
I just had a question and a comment. First of all, because I know sidewalks are designated like free speech areas, and with the open carry law, it affects all of Texas. So, like, would that be applied to the open carry? So, like, direct, if someone walked onto sidewalks, like on, I forget the street name, like the open public sidewalk with an assault rifle or shotgun, because that's technically like a free speech area, like, does that apply to this law?
So, you want to get into specifics there, because I'm going to mess up the whole handgun versus other stuff?
Right. So, the handgun license carry is just handguns. So, you, you can't carry a rifle across campus. That hasn't changed, and that, that won't change. Well, not for two years. So, be careful with that. So, it just applies to the hand, the licensed handgun. Open carry occurs outside of campus, and the concealed carry starts once you come onto the confines of the campus.
So, like the sidewalks, so like the free speech areas on campus, that doesn't apply to...
No, it does apply. The sidewalks that go through campus, parking lots are all part of the concealed carry.
But does that, does it apply to like the open carry?
Open carry will only be on public streets, and then public property away from the campus property.
Okay. Then my, my suggestion is, Chris, you probably heard a lot, the active groups on campus sometimes get harassed by various people. I think that'd be good to have like those, like events on campus, sort of like the MSA, the Muslim Student Association, they usually get harassed by a lot of people. It's like have those, like, maybe events that were just put on, be able, like, or they should be able to request, like, this event's a gun-free area, or like, so if the MSA, wherever it wants to, or FMLA wants to designate a space for a day, a gun-free area, I think that should be something they should be able to do.
Yes. Thank you for the comment, and that, that is, we have, we've requested that. When I keep saying we've requested that, we have, we have put in the request to the Office of General Counsel, to the Law Office, the Legal Office at UNT, that we have some procedure on play, in place on campus with the hundreds of events that we have on campus each year, in which those, some of those events can go through a process and be determined, gun-free zones for the day or for the four hours or however long they take. He has a hand up over here.
I'm an exchange student coming in from Canada, so we have a different mindset, I would say. At least they do. But I just wanted to point out a few things about what campus shootings, like what kind of materials these people are using, that a concealed carry holder, you're, it's going to be something you're going to be carrying mostly every day in all these places you're going, and you're going to be limiting yourself to maybe a smaller, a smaller handgun, a smaller weapon, less ammunition. These people who are going into these buildings, they're carrying multiple long guns, they're carrying multiple handguns, they're carrying full-size weapons. That's something that a concealed carry holder, they may carry one full-size weapon, but it's more likely that they're going to be carrying a small weapon. The consistency between someone, first of all, statistically, it's negligible for a concealed carry holder to, to commit a mass shooting. And second of all, they don't have the proper equipment to do that. These are things that are planned in advance, they don't just happen just like that. That's something I want to say, it's just the equipment doesn't match up, and what else was I going to say? I think you guys are privileged in this country to have the right to self-defense. It's not just something that we're taking law into our own hands and things like that. There, there are standards that are used in, in Texas courts and in courts here in this country that justify self-defense. It's not just willy-nilly go around and do whatever you like. There are standards. I, I really suggest that people read the Texas Penal Code and what the standards are for applying deadly force or applying force when you're doing that. In, in Canada, even if you carry a stick with the intention of defense, you're, you're going to be put away. It doesn't matter what it is. So, I think you guys really need to consider what you have in this country. That's something that I don't have, and unless I become a citizen here, I guess, someday, but, but just consider, just consider that it's, that there, there has to be justification and that you guys have a right in this country, and just to consider that. Don't, don't lose it.
Thank you. Anybody else got a microphone in their hand? All right, anybody from the committee and any final comments? All right, well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Again, campuscarry.unt.edu. You can continue to offer your comments to us. We'll continue to monitor them. We also have future forums scheduled, so thank you for your time and enjoy your evening.